Just give those to Katie. You take those. You can always tell when we're swearing an officer. We always have.
It's the auditorium.
Yes, the auditorium.
Look at there's a Lashrow. There's a Lashrow. The I Lash.
That's fine.
I'll call the meeting to order, President. Stand for the fledgling. Fledgling.
To the flag, the United States of America and to the public for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with one rule, just for law.
We have no public hearings tonight. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? I bring none. Sitors and comments. Select Board comments.
Yes.
It's technical. She's in the pink.
I would like to come up here and talk to not only people in the room, but as well as video land. Hear me. Tonight, I would like to take a few minutes to talk about a very important problem that we have here in town, and that is speeding. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. Speed limits are posted on many roads. These limits are based on the condition of the road, how far you can see, and what typical traffic is like. That's why they post speed limits. They only say you cannot go faster than the speed shown if road and weather conditions make the posted speed unsafe. You must slow down, right? A no-brainer. Maximum speed limits in Maine unless otherwise posted are 45 miles per hour outside any business or residential, 25 miles per hour in a business or residential, 15 miles per hour, and this is very important, when passing a school. Slow down if they are going to school or coming out of school. Traffic experts have studied road conditions, traffic, and accidents on roads to decide on a reasonable speed limit. It is illegal to exceed the posted speed limit. Racing on the highway and driving recklessly are not allowed. Maine law also says you must not drive so slowly that you interfere with the normal and reasonable movements of traffic. Slow down and pay attention. You are not the only driver on the road. You not only have yourself to watch out for, but you have, you need to be watchful of the other driver as well, not to mention if you have someone in the cab with you or if they have someone in the cab with you. Slow down and accept the responsibility of having a license to drive. Having a license is a privilege. It's not a law. Having a license means you are being trusted to follow the rules of the road, and if you are not sure of these said rules, may I suggest you get an updated copy of the driver's manual and study it. It's a no-brainer, folks. Slow down when you drive. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
You're welcome. I remember those from my driver's ed days when you listed the speed limits, the 45 and the 25 and the 15. I remember that page.
It's common sense, folks. Common sense. Okay?
Any other comments from the Select Board?
Well, last week I talked about the art opening for the Madomic River, and I have to tell you, there must have been 100 people or more that came. Wall-to-wall people. And you couldn't do this until almost the end. It was just lovely. And the art, there were 10 artists, and the depictions of the river were just wonderful. We even had a video of Jan Griesenbrock, his drone video that went over the river, and a picture of that from town out. It was really, really very nice. So, anyway, it was nice. It was a good turnout. It was the place to be last Saturday night in Waldenborough.
We'll move on to the next order of business.
Town manager's report?
I'm sorry.
I don't have much to add to my report. I don't have anything to add to my report, other than to ask, perhaps before we swear in our new officer, perhaps you could introduce your family, Arkansas.
Yeah, no problem. So, we have Gabriel.
Hi, Gabriel.
Stand up, Gabriel. Wave at everybody.
Hi.
We have Jay right beside him. And Miss Lexus beside her mom here. My beautiful wife, Amber. And then here's Madison. And this is my father, and this is my wife's grandparents, Peter and Anita.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And he's my neighbor.
He's your neighbor. Why do you even get to live next to you?
My neighbor. He's got a great girl. Higher than my neighbor.
Well, we know he's gonna keep you in line then, don't we?
Well, yeah.
But he's tried since he moved there.
And I just want to point out that the last, the two of our last hires, I give all the credit in the world to Chief Lash, or Chief Flash, as we like to call him. I just think it's very important to point out that both of our last hires are veterans, and they have served our country with great pride, and there is a lot to be said about that. And we're just so blessed that we are getting such high-quality and caliber officers to join, and it's just a testament, I think, to the fine job that Katie and Jan and I did on the hiring team to hire the chief. So somehow we're taking credit for all of this, pretty much.
Thank you very much. So the next order of business is to swear in our new police officer. If you'll come forward, please.
Consent calendar?
We'll do that after.
Okay.
Yes, please.
And the kids, come on up. Well, have one of the kids or your wife hold them. You gotta go over there.
I, Dwight J. Jones.
I, Dwight J. Jones.
Also known as Arkansas.
Also known as Arkansas.
solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I shall continue. What was that again?
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
I will in all respects.
I will in all respects.
Observe the ordinances of the town of Waldenborough.
Observe the ordinances of the town of Waldenborough.
And the constitution and laws of the state of Maine.
The constitution and laws of the state of Maine.
And will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of police officer.
The duties of the police officer.
For the ensuing municipal year.
For the ensuing municipal year.
Congratulations.
Do you guys want to post pictures with the flag behind them? Well, it's just that way, you know, the family can get the proper pictures with the kids and everybody, and the press loves it, and Beth was there having fits.
I want them. Smile.
Chief Flash. It's Chief Flash.
Beth, Beth. Wait, wait.
Be in front of the flag.
So, I just wanted to say a few words. First of all, welcome DJ. We're super excited to have him. I will put together an awesome team here, and he's a part of it. One of the big questions that we get during this hiring process is, so it must be really hard picking the right person, picking, you know, what do you think about? And it's really quite simple. Who do you want showing up when something bad's happened? Who do you want showing up when you need help? I would want him showing up to help me, so that's how I kind of put it in perspective when people ask me, and DJ's no different. When something's going wrong, I want him there to help. Just wanted to say that real quick, and congratulations. Thanks for coming over. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
She should've done that in front of the flag.
Yeah.
Do as I say, not as I do.
Now, back to the consent calendar.
I make a motion that we accept the consent calendar, although there is warrants number 60, 61, and 62 to add to it.
Do we want to do that?
There's a, we need to fix something in here, too.
On the minutes?
Yeah, but we can do that.
I wasn't sure if we wanted to add the warrants, since we're going to have the warrant discussion. Did you want to have the warrant discuss, did you want to adopt the warrants after you have the warrant discussion, or did you just want to do it the old way?
Let's do it after we've discussed the warrants and the procedure. Yeah, sorry, Jenny.
Do we have a second, though?
I'll second it.
Okay, then.
Then we can do the discussion.
Yeah. I just, just a little thing on here. Chris Jones, the pronoun should be changed to she instead of him.
Sure that is.
It was just that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
Bye.
Bye. Or I can stay.
You're on the road.
Stop it any time, kids.
Just entered the room.
We have the best team. I'm telling you, it's just amazing.
Did we vote on the consent calendar?
No.
We're gonna wait. The minutes.
Just the Chris Jones.
Correction. To the minutes.
They're too, too.
So we're voting on the consent calendar with the correction noted to the minutes. All right, all in favor? Minority Marijuana Committee reporter, Will.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
So I'm gonna begin by just apologizing. I'm horrible at this, but thank you for having me. So after meeting for a little over a year as committee, a few of us came together with this portion of the report, and I'm gonna do my best to read through this for you. So I'm not gonna waste too much time about trying to state any definitive claims on the subject of health and marijuana. Any of us could quickly search cannabis health effects online and find a spectrum of reports ranging from that it is deadly on contact to it being a cure-all for anything that ails you. I could simply say that as a licensed caregiver and patient, I have received relief from my own Crohn's disease, which I suffered from since the age of 11, that many pharmaceutical drugs just could not do, and with minimal to no side effects. So what we are talking about is the social, environmental, and economic cost/benefit analysis of allowing recreational cannabis to function in Waldenborough. Quickly, a little history on it. Marijuana's initial illegality began in Texas as a way to control immigrant, immigrant workers coming from Mexico. That was quickly wrapped up in a big debate over the cotton industry and furthered across the country. Throughout the alcohol temperance movement, cannabis was seen as a possible substitute for alcohol, but at the end of the alcohol prohibition, cannabis became enemy number one. Cannabis has been villainized, or was villainized, by Harry J. Anslinger, the father of our modern Federal Bureau of Investigations, and as an effort to justify his fledgling department's quickly ballooning budget. But at that time, New York's mayor LaGuardia actually commissioned the first study of in-depth manner on marijuana in 1939, and found that it was not specifically addictive, nor does it lead to further drug use or negative social behaviors. This report was fervently suppressed by Anslinger, who by hit this point was working with Joseph McCarthy on his commission to weed out communist sympathizers, and almost all copies of the report were destroyed. We fast forward to today, where 33 states have some form of medical cannabis, and 10 of those have voted to enact a form of recreational cannabis legislation. Additionally, large multi-conglomerates are preparing their own supply chains and infrastructure to seize this blossoming industry. For instance, Bayer AG, one of the largest pharmaceutical companies in the world, has systematically been moving in both the agricultural market and cannabis market, with its purchase of Monsanto in 2019, and into the cannabis industry with Monsanto's purchase of Sunlight Supply in 2018 through their subsidiary Hawthorne Garden Company. Along with several other industry standard nutrients, pesticides, and equipment companies that they had purchased over the prior decade, Sunlight Supply was the pinnacle of this series of acquisitions as the largest cannabis-related distributor in North America. There are currently talks of Monsanto and Philip Morris teaming up on a proposal for commercial cannabis operations in Northern California. Therefore, is my conclusion that we are long past the if factor of recreational cannabis implementation, and on to the when and how and with whom factor. The current models in question are social clubs, retail storefronts, labs for analysis and extraction, and cultivation facilities. My personal take on retail stores and social clubs is that they are temporary fix to the access issue, and as with dry counties and towns in the past, they should be voted on and regulated by the municipalities in which they will impact. My only caveat to that is that we all understand, whether it's four years from now or 15 years from now, that they will be rendered obsolete upon any form of federal legalization. So when we start talking about cannabis as a commodity on the open market, which will someday soon be able to be purchased by the pack from a cabinet at the front of Hannaford, then we should look at the primary factors of doing business. To begin with is the market. Well, currently, the CDC estimates that 45% of the US population uses tobacco as well as alcohol, and that about 18% uses illicit drugs, including cannabis. So it is presumed that as legislation continues nationwide, the consumer market has a potential to triple. When we step back and look at the nation as a whole, the largest continuous population density exists between Boston, DC, and Ohio, with the pinnacle being New Jersey with 1,195 people per square mile, compared to Maine's 43 people per square mile, Vermont's 67 people per square mile, and New Hampshire's 147 people per square mile. When we compare average property values, Massachusetts tops the list at $407,000 averaging retail property, followed by New Jersey at $325,000 average, whereas Maine is far down the list at $230,000 per average retail property, just below New Hampshire at $275,000, and Vermont at just over $204,000. When we also take into consideration land value, whereas in 2017, Maine was the cheapest in all of New England, $2,200 per acre, followed by New York, $2,900 per acre, and Vermont, $3,360 per acre. When we look at Massachusetts, which is $10,400 per acre, Connecticut, which is $11,200 per acre, New Jersey, $12,000 per acre, and top of all of New England, Rhode Island, being $13,800 per acre, we start to see quite a difference, especially in comparison to the population. Finally, we must look at states' corporate tax rates. While Rhode Island and New York do have the lowest corporate tax rates of 7% and 6.5%, respectively, it is expected that this will change as their local governments move more left in elections to come. Behind these rates come Massachusetts at 8%, New Hampshire at 8.2%, and Vermont at 8.5% and Maine at 8.9%, the most expensive being Connecticut, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania, all at 9% or more. So when we aggregate all of this data to evaluate property value versus demand and cost of doing business, upstate New York, Vermont, and Maine are the most advantageous places within direct vicinity to their potential future markets and with politically friendly environments to set up commercial cannabis cultivation, especially in terms of indoor or greenhouse production. And I mean to make this argument not only for cannabis cultivation, but also for, sorry, but also for vertical farming or greenhouse-based agriculture of any form. Back to cannabis, though. In July of 2017, Las Vegas almost ran out of product in their newly-licensed recreational cannabis stores. So the government of Utah positioned, excuse me, the governor petitioned the DEA to allow them to receive cannabis from licensed facilities in California and Colorado, setting up a precedence for the industry to cross state borders with a product that had never been heard of before. And I say that if anything, we should expect this to be the future of the industry. So how do we make this applicable to Waldenborough? Well, the first thing that comes to mind is our fisheries, specifically the lobster co-ops, which have a long and strong history of providing good, stable jobs in what was formerly quite a tumultuous industry. While there are currently anti-cooperative laws on the books for the MMMP bill that stands, there are not yet such guidelines in the coming recreational bill, and there is much talk about removing the anti-cooperative laws under the next evaluation of the MMMP bill. I would like to go one step further and ask, why could there not be a municipally-established exchange for the regulation and exportation of cannabis, or at least a base of this idea set up as we move forward? Because when we are having to fill tractor trailers to be sent to market in Connecticut, it could either be a few companies doing so, paying their workers a little better than minimum wage, and sending the bulk of their profits to tax havens like Delaware, or it could be tens of thousands of Maine farmers making $80,000 a year or more, and municipalities retaining profit therefrom to improve roads, schools, parks, et cetera. I draw inspiration for this from something that is quite an old institution in our nation, the Bank of North Dakota. It's the oldest state-owned and operated bank in the nation, hailing from a time when state-owned banks outnumbered private institutions. Established in 1919, the Bank of North Dakota currently operates with $136.2 million a year and total assets at $7.2 billion. It is completely solvent. Separated from the Stock Exchange, the bank has made its way supporting municipal infrastructure, small businesses, and residential loans for over 100 years. By doing this, they were, they are able to put the state and people of North Dakota ahead of corporate profits, and any form of municipally-run agency were to be instituted. The township could have quality control on market value regulation, and both are extremely important considering, sorry, and both are extremely important considering the corners that are often cut in the processes of mass production. Even if the municipality option does not strike your fancy, I must at a minimum implore you to set up some base form of environmental impact regulations. Large-scale farming of conventional means is often found to lead to runoff of biological and salt-based contaminants that can threaten our streams, waterways, and fisheries, and with Maine seeing its lowest clam harvest in a quarter of a century this past year, that is the last thing that we need. The final pages of my report refer to a joint study done over 25-year period comparing environmental impact and crop yield of multiple crops, both conventionally and organically grown. And without adding in increased market value for organic vegetable sales, organic cultivation was found to be equally as productive, if not more so, in some scenarios with far less long-term impact or need for refertilization. We have a 28-page report that the entire board has been handed. I please ask that you look through it thoroughly. Much of it is sourced as best as we can from as much as we can find in our spare time as we work full-time jobs additionally, but I really see this as being a large potential for the town of Waldenborough, especially considering that Waldenborough was 75% blue-collar with a median income of $17,000 a year. So are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Will. They're here. Been hiding? Oh, they've been hiding, yes. Oh, I've been hiding. Here, I'll just trip.
Did you enjoy it?
I did. It was a short one. I don't know if you remember, but this is Ron.
Yes.
And this is Karen. And Beauty.
Beauty. What should I say?
I don't know. Now, I find that hard to believe. I did distribute to each one of the Select Board the mini audit of 2017 and 18. You said you'd come back and tell us all about it.
And here we are.
And here you are.
Did they get a copy of the management letter comments that we had sent you?
The what? Can you make the copy of this for everybody? Are you gonna start off with that?
No, I think I'll just start off with the overall financial condition of the town, spend some time with 17, get more to like today.
Okay.
And tell you guys where you're at, you know, financially, and then talk about the process and the comments and, you know, some of the things that we've been talking about for about four months now. So how does that sound?
Sounds marvelous.
Would you like to do a way to take the, come back?
No, she's, she's perfect.
So we go back to, so here's what I'll say. The financial condition for the town in 2017 improved over '16, and in '18 it improved over '17. And I'll talk specific numbers here now. So in 2017, June 30, you guys had about $1,250,000 of carryover balance, of which about a million, a little over a million, $1,42,000 wasn't assigned to anything. I believe out of that $1,250,000, you guys used $150,000 for tax relief in FY 2018, and what wasn't obligated to anything is about $1 million. And where we like to see you all And where we like to see you all at is anywhere from thirty, sixty, to ninety days of your operating budget. And so what's that mean? Eight, sixteen, and twenty-four percent of your operating budget. Right in the middle is a, what we always say to government, you know, and these are national benchmarks that are used by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board and widely adopted by moody's and standard enforced. And based on a ten million dollar budget for seventeen, it's about ten and a half million dollars for eighteen. You know, what, what that means for you guys? Eight hundred thousand dollars for thirty days or eight percent. For sixty days or sixteen percent, about one point six million dollars. And two point four million dollars for, uh, for, uh, for ninety days. So where are you? You're at about forty-five days in two thousand and seventeen. So a little bit below average, you know, where we want you to, uh, to be. But certainly, I think, in a good financial position, you know, for sure. And, uh, yeah. The, one of the unique things, you know, about the town of Waldboro is you guys operate out of water department. So you've got about ninety days, based on about a two hundred thousand dollar operating budget for your water department. You've actually got a healthy water department. I believe, you know, it was about eighty thousand dollars in two thousand and seventeen. It dropped to about sixty-one thousand in eighteen, and we'll talk about in a little minute, in a few minutes. But you're at about ninety days, you know, of your operating budget for, uh, for your water department. And those can be very unique creatures in the world of government because you can spend a lot of time, you know, with infrastructure above the ground and below the ground, you know. And, uh, you know, certainly, it's, it's, it can be problematic and cause certain budget constraints, but I don't think you've experienced that. But it actually, your financial, uh, condition dropped when we're talking about that, eighteen to seventeen.
Yeah, they told us.
Yeah, so a couple of things. It could be time for a water rate increase. I don't know, nobody likes to hear that, but certainly.
No, we are aware.
You know, I think it's time to throw that out there, you know, to, uh, to certainly, uh, start thinking about that. So my professional opinion, we probably do eighty to a hundred water departments in the state of Maine. And I think it's time, you know, I think it's time, and I think it's something you've got to look at hard, you know, for sure, like right now. So, uh, and the other thing that I would just say, put on your radar screen, you've got this landfill closure that I think is prevalent in seventeen and eighteen. You've got about a hundred thousand dollars, I think, stuck in a reserve account to fund the post closure, that would be care, the post closure. You know, it sounds like, based on your engineers, you're going to need more north of about a quarter of a million dollars or your.
Well, and, and that brings up an interesting issue. Because apparently we were supposed to pay that fund back. We'll talk to you about that.
Sure.
Because that's one of our questions I have. But thank you for pointing that out.
Something you want to definitely put on the radar screen, just trying to say, you know, before you, as you're preparing your two thousand and twenty budget, you know, I'm assuming like right now, we're trying to have you with some information here.
Perfect.
Going in, you know, to that, to just say, here's a couple of things on your radar screen this year and next, over the next couple of years. And I think the landfill closure is scheduled for like two thousand and twenty.
Yes, we're starting in that.
Yeah, so it's time, it's really time, you know. And, uh, and, and if you need a budget mechanism to do that, clearly, you might want to think about using some fund balance. So it's nice to know how much it is that you have out there, which is why I think this conversation is very timely, you know, to have. And, uh, and clearly, uh, again, put these financial obligations, you know, on your radar screen for sure.
Just to clarify the, the closing of the landfill. We borrowed from ourselves, the transfer station budget borrowed from itself. Not, this has nothing to do with the town's general fund.
Yeah, not, not at all.
Has nothing to do with the transfer station's general fund. We borrowed from that general fund a number of years ago to install a scale and a monitor and do some of the things. What we have failed to do is use general fund money in that transfer station general fund to repay the borrowing. It was a bookkeeping oversight. The money is there.
Yeah.
And once it's been repaid, we'll have more than enough to do the.
We can certainly talk about that. We just want to make, I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing.
We are, and it's, it's in fund balance in the transfer station. And I don't think, technically, what should have happened is there should have been a.
There should have been some book entries.
Yeah, there should have been book entries that were never made, so.
So maybe it's residing in one house right now. It needs to get moved over to your landfill.
Which I'm sure you'll address in your management question, so I want to shut up.
We'll, we'll talk about those things for sure, a little bit later on in the story. So, so two thousand and seventeen, I think that, again, it's, we're, we're, we're over a year removed from it. And as I told you guys when we huddled up, you know, back this past fall, we're more interested in where you're at right now. And I think that that would be where the value of the conversation is, which is what I want to jump into now.
Let's jump.
And to, to seventeen and really get into eighteen and really talk about that. And I think that that really is where we can begin the story. Because we, we, we had some new faces, you know, that we provided you all this year. And I hope that we certainly didn't bore you and certainly take away much of your, you know, your valuable time because we know how little you have.
Well, I, I just want to say that Karen and her team were absolutely phenomenal.
Yeah.
I, I, I definitely saw a difference from one audit to the next.
Yeah.
And I, I, I just, I can't speak highly of more, I cannot speak any more highly of Karen than to say that she asked, from my experience, from doing this for thirty years and a former CFO, she asked the right questions, professional, to the point, and, and I thoroughly enjoyed working with her.
And, and what I'll say is, you know, is simply this. We literally, you know, because of the new transition team, we did almost three audits, you know, this year. Just to go back and look at the history, try to see where the numbers came from, try to, try to follow through, you know, really. Because you ought to be able to handle, hand us something that you understand, and we ought to be able to take it and generate this. And as we're going to talk about a little bit later on in the story and some, some better practices and some more official, efficient use of your financial software, it didn't roll that way. But I think that we are definitely pointed in the right direction now to get it there, you know, certainly in that direction. And there's a lot of work on both sides, you know, that clearly went into this conversation that we're able to have right now for June thirty, eighteen, and really even come up to now, to two thousand and nineteen. And I think that that's good conversation to, you know, to have. And to simply say it, your financial condition improved in two thousand and eighteen over seventeen, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So you're almost at about one point two million dollars of, uh, of, excuse me, one point four million dollars, one point two of undesigned fund balance, about one point four million dollars of fund balance. And I think you used about a hundred and sixty-six-ish to balance your FY nineteen budget, you know, that you are about to end four months down the road. So you've got an improvement, you know, of undesigned fund balance over two thousand and nineteen, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, and that was largely in part, not revenue-related, but virtually expenditure-related. You returned some unspent appropriations to reobligate for a future budget. Back to your bottom line, it was about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And that's really, you know, where I think most of that money, you know, came from in the form of savings. You know, what you budgeted for and what you actually spent came in under budget. And that is the increase, you know, of, of your fund balance. And based on about a ten and a half million dollar budget, you know, for, uh, for FY eighteen, you know, I'm still going to use that thirty, sixty, ninety-day principle, you know. And you're at about sixty days now. So that, that's, that's what a hundred thousand dollars, I don't know what a mill rate is, what, what mill is in the town of Waldboro. You know, but if it's three hundred thousand dollars, you've just got a third of a mill, you know, back, you know, through, you know, through maintaining a budget, returning that to reobligate it down the road. So I think that that's good news to say that you have financially improved from seventeen to eighteen.
And that, that's a testament to my department head.
So, and I think that they ought to all, you know, be commended for sure. You know, so, so when we can sit here and talk about information, you know, that's real, you know, that we're talking about numbers that we physically see that we're really confident, you know, in. And, and we can talk about the story about how much more confident we want to get, some better practices around here. Clearly, I think it's good conversations. We pulled out excerpts of this document so we could have this conversation here tonight. You're actually going to have a full report, I understand, at some point tomorrow because of some of the new changes that came in, et cetera. But there's some decisions we'd like you all to make just after I just hit some of the other highlights. Your water department financial condition, your, your carryover balance went down about eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars from seventeen to eighteen. So there's some, I'm not going to say concern because I still think that you're healthy, but clearly, it's, it's definitely time, I think, to look at a rate increase for sure.
They were supposed to be here tonight, being water, to talk about our rate increase because I wanted you here to hear it. But they couldn't make it, so, but we are in process.
And the thing that you'll see as a, as a board, you know, is clearly that, um, uh, water is different than wastewater because it's regulated by the Public Utilities Commission. So you'll have to, as you do your water rate increase, you have to hold public hearings, and you'll have to give the people a chance to, uh, you know, converse, you know, about, and have discussions with you about this rate increase. It'll have to be posted online with the Public Utilities Commission. So there's the process if you haven't gone through it for a while, you know. But I would not expect any problems from what I saw in you getting a rate increase. I think that the question's going to be, how do you do it? Is it going to be over a few years? You're going to do it in steps? And I think that those are the things that you're talking, that you are probably going to, going to be talking about with them. And if you would like us, we do about four or five a year in our office. So if there's any guidance or sounding board that you or me, maybe you weren't happy to offer or hear, you know, and a hand, certainly in that area, so. So a lot of times, you don't want to burden your rate payers, you know, with a rate increase all at once. So what we see is steps, you know. Do one one year, two years down the road, do one. And I just don't know when the last time you had a rate increase, but.
Thirteen.
Thirteen years.
So.
Thirteen years ago.
Yeah, thirteen, so it's time, it's definitely time. And I think what you'll find out is there might be some sticker shock, but I would bet that your main water is going to give you some options, you know, certainly for what that's going to look like.
I own five houses on town water, so I don't want to see it go up too fast, too quick. And that's, I've been involved in that, so.
Lot of options, lot of options to get it there where it needs. And I think that it's a way to say and pay respect to your rate users, you know, to get it there, you know, at one point, you know, over a course of time.
Important for you as our auditors to point that out. I think you've just tried to build the arguments the water department is making.
Yeah, and let me just tell you this. Sheerly, if it's thirteen years since you had a rate increase, I'm just doing some arithmetic because it was about fifteen years, you know, from the last place I went. That means something I'm not here to scare you. And they were looking, and one of the options that they looked at is almost a sixty to a seventy percent rate increase.
They said thirty-three percent.
Right.
So, so that certainly is not unreasonable. I think the question is, is what does that do for you? And how long, you know, does that last? You know, so when you're making up for thirteen years' worth of time.
We're going to set policy on that now, too. We're working on a policy for that, because there isn't one.
Yeah.
It was the first, it was the first time, I guess, we'd ever, anybody'd ever ventured down and met with them at their office. So it was, it was eye-opening, I think, for both Abdin and I to sit there and hear what we had to hear. And then when they came in, I think the entire select board was like, whoop.
And clearly, the conversation that it sounds like we want to get somewhere on before we finalize eighteen is where you're at with this landfill closure, you know, and just making sure all the arithmetic adds up and everybody, and everything's been settled. You know, so that we make sure that we've got enough money, you know, based upon what the engineers are telling us on what you're going to need, you know, to, to close that landfill, so. And I would say that those are the financial highlights of two thousand and eighteen, you know, really out of a ninety-page document. You know, we provided you, I think, with about fourteen pages, you know, excerpts that really tell the story. And I think that that's the piece of the story that I want to tell now, is that, you know, as, as we hand you these, you know, and, and say, here's, here's what you have and what you need to make business decisions. One of the things that I, that we've all talked about here, you know, as, as a collective group, and certainly that we got in more detail with Karen, Julie, and Peg to talk about all this stuff, you know, was how these numbers get on a piece of paper. And really, you know, what, 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 what this thing should look like. And about ten years ago-ish, I understand that the town applied for and received a comprehensive annual financial report award from the GFOA, which I think is a very prestigious award in our profession. So as I sit here and talk about, you know, who you are, your financial condition and all that, we have a, an agency that exists out there. And it's not a federal agency, it's more of a professional agency, you know, that's our geared towards government. You know, it's called the Government Finance Officers Association, where you guys applied for an achievement, which is the highest reporting award. And that was ten years ago.
Over ten years ago.
Over ten years ago. So, and at that time, ten years ago, let me just say this, even if it was ten years ago, even if it was seven years ago, this profession's changed a lot. And a lot of the information that you're providing in your financial statements, you know, that have been in the past historically with seventeen, going back to when you got that award, there's been a lot of new changes to the profession. And some of the schedules and the supplemental information that you provide, it's outdated and no longer required. But now there's new supplemental information. And what we'd like to do, starting with two thousand and eighteen, is really change the face of your financial statement. And I think we've worked hard with Peg and Julie to try to educate on where the numbers are coming from. And I still haven't forgotten that yet, that conversation. But it's going to look different, you know, than, than what this says. Because this says comprehensive annual financial report. And I think because you're not submitting it anymore to the GFOA, which has a very stringent guideline on what this thing's supposed to look like, I would probably go back to the basics and start rebuilding this house, you know, to, to the point where you can get this information, understand this information, and more importantly, go to your financial software and have all these things talk to each other. And I think there's some work to do there. And I think in order to do that, I think that, that this is a product that we need to take a hard look at because there's a lot of outdated verbiage in here, a lot of schedules that just aren't necessary anymore. And we've replaced them with some of these schedules here. And I think that that's kind of a changing of the guard, for lack, you lack a better word to say, financially, financial reporting changing of the guard, to kind of get you out of where you were in a place more than ten years ago by the sounds of things, and more caught up into today with a lot of the new pronouncements and a lot of the new standards and a lot of the new reporting requirements as it relates to pensions and, and, and post-employment benefits that are non-retirement related. All these new standards that have come out in the past five or six years, which have really added twenty-five pages to your financial statements. It's time to, to, to change, you know, the, the way you present your financial, to make sure you've got everything in there. You know, so, so outdated is one thing. We don't care about outdated, we're not issuing an opinion on it. But I'd want something that's, that makes sense, something that you're going to use that information for that's more current, you know, as far as supplemental information. And that's what we did, did two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. And we really kind of would like to get back to, um, uh, a representative set of financial statements nationally, you know, what this thing looks like, and get away from that comprehensive annual financial report presentation because I just don't think you need it now. If you're going to apply for that award, what you made two or three years, you want to go back again and apply that award to, to say, wow, we are really doing an amazing job in how we present our financial statements. I think that there's other things that you need to address internally here first. And, and I would probably put that in front of this comprehensive annual financial report. So you will see the same information. You will see the same numbers that I just talked about, just presented in a different way with more footnote scores, you know, in them for two thousand and eighteen. One, because it was your implementation year in two thousand and eighteen. And the other, you know, just because we, we update it, we put more beef, you know, in here. And traditionally, what would happen is, is, is we would get handed a spreadsheet, you know, and we would prepare a piece of the document, you know, the Word and the Excel, and the piece in the very front, the management discussion analysis. Eileen would actually prepare that document based on the information that we would provide. We now can give you that information, have it update those tables, and all you've got to do is go in and change the verbiage and the numbers. Where you can create your own, you know, management and discussion, and that's the way it should be.
Peg and I discussed that, Julie, and I think that is the way.
So, so I, so that, so again, you know, before and as we look into finalizing this, make it yours. We can give you plenty of samples and plenty of blueprints, you know, and, and again, make it yours, own it. You know, we can give you, you know, the blueprint to take it and make it yours. We will, we will hand you an Excel and Word document, say, here you go, make it yours, put your stamp on it. You know, and I think that that's, uh, that's important.
It is, I think it is.
Because it helps you understand the numbers.
And I think it will help them understand the numbers.
Which really brings me into the, I, I think the, the, the real story here now is the numbers. You know, how do these numbers get on the piece of paper? Well, it's not easy, you know, I can tell you that. And one of the things, you know, that we've all talked about is the use of your financial software, how it got set up and, you know, and, and like where it's at right now. And I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done, you know, as far as setup and reformatting and, you know, and, and basically getting everything in that software. You know, because right now, you've got, uh, banking accounts that reside off-book. You've got funds that reside off-book, one of them's your water department. Other ones are certain trust funds, you know, that you have here that don't reside. When you generate financial reports internally, they don't reside, you know, there internally. And there's some work that you all have to do, you know, to, to gather that information so you can make these business decisions. And it's just time that you probably need to really look at that trio software. Get away from some of these. Get away from some of these Excel spreadsheets where you've been maintaining the accounting for that, let your software do the work for you. It can do so much, you know, and I really think that, you know, that's one of the, that you ought to be able to hand us a product that we can look at and do nothing more than verify, you know, and, and have this conversation with you. But right now, there was so much work, and I think in the past, you know, definitely in two thousand and eighteen and eighteen, we now understand where all of these numbers are coming from, so we can have these conversations. I think that there's some setup work that you gotta do with Trio, you know, and, and I think that there's no need to reinvent the wheel. I just think that there needs to, you know, be some updating, you know, some adjustments, you know, made to the software. You know, where you bring all your funds on the book, you know, whether or not you're getting information from Main World Water, still should reside in-house on your books. You know, whether or not you're getting trust funds for various trust funds, and you got a lot, it's a busy town, you know, still should reside on your book. Your HRA account still should reside on your book.
Should be, I completely agree.
All of these things, you know, right now, you know, that are kind of decentralized, you know, that we talked about earlier, centralize them, use your software to do that, and these, I think, are where the conversations that we clearly have, have been having for the past, you know, four months. And in some of, and then, and in that same breath, you know, we've had a conversation, we've had a conversation, I just wanna, just make sure we're all on the same page, we've found, found some variances, you know, out there. Do we believe that there's money missing? No, you know, we just think that there's, you know, when you transition to the Trio software and, you know, and trying to bring a lot of this stuff in-house, you know, clearly, it was a big adjustment for this town. I think there's a lot of things going on, so we would call them more bookkeeping errors. And I think that the one thing that we looked hard at with these bookkeeping errors was looking to clean those things up, you know, but we're not talking significant money, we're, we're talking a hundred dollars here, eleven hundred dollars, thirty dollars, you know, just balances that you're carrying on your book, you know, that we, that we, I'm, I'm not sure as far as, you know, accuracy-related or not, for sure, definitely wanna fix, you know. And I think that we've done a great job in trying to address that in two thousand and eighteen, but nothing to the, I'm gonna use a professional word, that rose to the level of materiality, you know, meaning that it would affect the reader's decision. Wow, we got a hundred thousand dollar, you know, bookkeeping error, you know, while the girls are making statements, what's up with that? That's something we wouldn't let go because it would be material to the financial statements. Two thousand dollars is a material, you know, to your set of financial statements. But when you're starting off clean, you know, and some of these may go back years, you know, in, in part of conversion-related, I wouldn't go spend good money, you know, after bad money, I would, you know, write some of these variances off for sure, stack clean, and if these problems still continue, now you got other problems, you know, so. But if you're not using your software, you don't know. You know, so we don't know where some of these things came in, it came from, you know, and, and.
And I think part of that's hard, too, because Peg just started.
Yeah.
July first of twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
And the audit ends June thirtieth of twenty eighteen.
And, and, and it's almost like the, the, the priviness, you know, and the institutional knowledge, you know, back end still resides in-house, but, you know, some people, people that sit in the same chair may not think the same way, you know. And I think if I'm sitting in that chair, I would want everything in that Trio software, and I would wanna know that I'm starting at a good starting point, you know, so going forward.
So that gives us twenty eighteen ending numbers are good numbers that Peg might have run with.
Exactly, and I'll tell you, we're, we're pretty confident that we're, you know, that we've, we've got some good numbers, and we know where some of these immaterial, you know, variances are. So, but it's not our job, it's only our job to sit here and advise and recommend, you know, and it's up to you guys to make the.
Oh, we're gonna implement, don't worry.
So, and I think you should.
We're gonna implement.
And there is where I'm going. And I think if somebody says out of that management letter, what's the biggest talking point? Take advantage of the software that you guys have out there. It can do so much for you and can allow you to make timely, better business decisions as opposed to taking a piece of paper like a trust bank statement or your HRA account or a twenty thousand dollar cell phone tower CD that you've got out here, things that don't reside on your book but reside in the spreadsheet somewhere. Take those spreadsheets, get rid of them, and combine them with your Trio software, and that's what really, I think, the focus of the conversation that we have with this audit is. I think that, you know, really do, and I think it's just a function, you know, continuing to sit with Peg and, you know, giving her access to Karen and, and, you know, and helping you all, you know, get caught up. Transition is the big word, transition from eighteen into nineteen.
Transition fresh start.
And transitioning clean, you know, for transition and clean. You know, and you've got a lot of opportunities, we know what clean looks like, you know, and you guys know what clean looks like, so get there, and I think you got some work to get there, you know, with Trio. And that's probably one of the biggest comments, you know, that's in this management letter, is really working smarter, not harder. Is the best way I can say it. And when you've gotta create spreadsheets, you know, that can exist in your software already, you're, that's, that's, that's working harder. You know, when you've gotta put your hands on a paid piece of paper or a bank statement two or three times as opposed to once, you know, because it resides here, here, and here, you know, or an Excel spreadsheet, that's working harder. And we're trying to get you to work smarter because you got a little time, you know, and, and I think it's precious, and, and I think it can be better and effectively used. And, and what you're not hearing me say, you know, is there may not have been a date and a time for this, but now you've made this investment into the software. You know, you've got somebody in a chair now that, that thinks in a different way. Let the software help think, help, help, help Peg think, you know, and, and I just think it would be easier, you know, for all parties, and I think it's gonna give you the best chance to make business decisions, you know, more timely, you know. It's right there at the press of the button, so, yeah, and, yeah. I mean, when you gotta go looking for bank statements and you find out, you know, that there's only fees and investment earnings on it, it's like, whoa, we know there's more, you know, so what? You know, it's just nice to have all that information, you know, in one place.
Awesome.
So that's, that's the biggest comment out there. Some other comments, I think that there's probably some better practices, certainly with your bank reconciliations and how those are being provided, you're carrying some old outstanding checks for sure. Time to turn them over to the main abandoned property, you know, division, you know, let them do the work. Get them out of the town of Waldenborough. If there are mistakes, then it's another whole different conversation, but when you've got some checks that go back to two thousand and ten, time to clean some of those things.
These are checks we've written that haven't been cashed.
Two thousand and ten, I think, was one of the older checks.
Back far back.
Yeah, and I think there was some more current for sure, but some even, many in between. So, and I think that those are probably, excuse me, bookkeepers. You know, and you can see like a run of those checks, as I recall, you know, that I'm talking about. So maybe it was a double run, a double posting, whatever it is, clean some of those, you know, those things up. EMS, you know, accounts receivable, they carry a large balance, you know, of accounts receivable. And, and a lot of the accounting resides in that office, you know. Do I think anything bad's going on? No, but I think what doesn't happen is the communication between that office and finance, I think, needs to be better. So what they do over there, it's incorporated in this document so that you can see what you're collecting, when you're collecting it, and more importantly, what fiscal year it belongs in. You know, right now, I think that there's some struggles, you know, that exist out there. Richard and I had this conversation, you know, back in November and December. I think he's aware and.
And I think we haven't followed our own policy on collection.
So, 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 whatever it is, how do you follow something if it's not part of your system? And that's why I'm saying it's, it's time to bring all this stuff under one roof.
I know!
You know, that way, that way, again, these conversations you're having, and we're a sounding board, you know, as you're having these conversations, that's just the way it should be. And I'm just trying to think of what else was in there. Some policy, we talked about some policy matters here, one. Fund balance being one of them, and I would stop there, if you've got a water balance policy, I think that it's time, you know, that where, where there's a trigger, you know, that says, hey, time to look at our water rates, you know, so. Fund balance policy, capital plan, there's a lot of infrastructure in this town. I think you draw, what, three or four hundred thousand dollars this past year and just paving alone in this town? There's a lot going on, you know, and you've got one point, like, four or five million dollars sitting in the capital reserve. How's that, how, how, how is it? When you gonna need it? And how much are you gonna need? Are you gonna need more? And I really think having some kind of a more fine-tuned, polished blueprint, you know, to.
We, we are doing that right now with our budget command.
Yeah, 'cause I'll tell you, that to me, next to salaries and benefits, if somebody says, Ron, what's your next big talking point financially? That's it, right there, burnout.
Wait, wait, it almost sounds like it's me talking.
It does.
Yeah, so lots of easy.
Almost like I know what I'm doing, I'm so happy!
That's an easy one, to, to certainly have a conversation with it. Cash receiving, yeah, and that, and that just one kinda piggybacks on bank reconciliations. Normally, I was like, weekly, you know, it was like a whole.
They deposit, they post weekly.
You post weekly, you know.
They don't post daily?
Yeah, no.
You will.
You know, and, 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 and a lot of times, when you post weekly, there's batches that are getting posted. So to try to kinda follow and tell the cash receiving story, post daily, deposit daily, you know, and clearly, you know, I think that, one, it's just gonna help cash flow, but two, it's gonna help reporting, it's gonna help accuracy, it's gonna give you some statistical information that you can definitely rely on. And I think that a lot of that goes back to your Trio software, too, and as you do this, I think that there might be some setup things that you're gonna need to address, you know, when you move into that direction on how you post, and those are all things that we can help you with as well.
Are you talking about an accurate, a more, a more accurate chart of accounts to begin with, and then proper.
The answer's one hundred percent, yes, and that chart of accounts is linked to, you know, to receipt codes and things like that, and I think that there's, 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 there's some things that you're gonna need to update.
Is Trio difficult in that regard?
No.
I think it's not.
No, no, it's not, it's just, again, it's just knowing the software. Well, let me qualify that. Trio is moving, I don't know where you are on this platform, into SQL.
We are already there.
Oh, good, great, good answer, great answer, so, that's, that's good, and next question. So, because it's problematic right now, and Trio's going through some, some change, you know, but we're confident that, again, you know, we've got the resources in-house, we've got at least four, five, you know, people that know Trio well, that can help you out, but it's, it's not hard, you know, at all.
It's just a matter of setting.
It's time, there really is time, but here's what I would do, don't stop there. I would just literally take what you've got now, have a conversation with you all collectively as a board and say, we'd like to see this, this, and this. Is there a way we can see that? Is there a cash report that we can see? Is there some kind of dispersment report that we can see? Because once you, 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 you link, you know, all this stuff together, Karen used the word crosswalk, once all this stuff talks to you, know what you want to look at first, so you're not revising it two or three times. We're doing to just do it once, you know, for goodness sakes, and, you know, and I think that would be important, you know, to do. And again, that goes back to our comment with just Trio and kinda bringing things in-house here, and, you know, and, and, and my, and I'm gonna shut up now after this, but probably the last thing that I would say is have a plan. Have a timeframe that, you know, that makes sense to you, you know, I think that you've been at Trio, you've been at Trio.
Since two thousand and eleven?
Yeah, so. Six, seven years, you know, come up with a blueprint to change, because I think that this is probably going to be a year of, you know, metamorphosis here for, for, for a period of time. Just know what you want.
Yeah, it's definitely given me the idea that Peg needs an assistant.
Yeah, so there's some, there, there, but there's some easy things, and what I would do is, as you, as you have this plan and say, okay, for June thirty, two thousand and twenty, we want this all implemented. It's easy to put a plan because we would tell you to stack, pick one area first, pick payroll first, pick, you know, pick cash receiving next, pick dispersments next, pick areas of your financial software, you know, that you can address and clean up some of these things, your chart of accounts, you know, what, what do we see? How do we see it? Maybe you can get that to Mary or Warren, you know, that you have, that you put on down. I mean, there's so many things that you can do with this, but just know what you want, you know, as you set it up.
Yes, some education.
And that's about all I got, you know, for now, and I really answer any questions that you all have. But that's about the presentation I can get about.
How much time do you think we'd free up every week if Peg were only doing apparel every two weeks instead of every week?
Apparel, how much time do I think you free up? Probably not a lot.
No.
No, I don't believe so. Yeah, I think, I think you can process more transactions, you know, and I think that, you know, the fact that you go from week. I'm, I'm just thinking in the crystal box, I've had this question asked, I mean, half a dozen, you know, times, probably even in the past two or three years, people went to help source payroll. How much time are we gonna free up if we outsource payroll? How much time are we gonna free up if we go to buy? And then you might have some issues with collective bargaining with the management, you might have some issues with statutory labor laws and things like that, I don't think much, I don't think we need that much time, so.
Does Trio have an ability to do asset accounting?
Yes.
Fixed asset accounting?
Yeah, it does.
Just a module?
I mean, depreciation's the kind of, where public stuff is concerned is a good area, but you can set, you know, set reasonable depreciation rates and keep track of what you think are useful.
So the answer, the answer is yes.
And it does.
Yeah, it does that, and, and also think, one thing that I definitely would start, and I, and I don't know where you're at in your budget process here right now, it might be too late for FY twenty.
No, it's not.
Okay, I'm telling you, I would use the budgeting features at a Trio. I mean, there's, you can do a lot of work for you.
Yeah, we started that last year.
Great, perfect, you know, so, listen, so, so obviously.
We got rid of the old Excel spreadsheet and went, which caused.
So listen, so obviously, there's been a lot of conversation and progress made, and I think that this is more of a validation of that.
But it makes sense.
But this is what our auditors are saying. It's validating the changes that Peg and I made last year, so it's a good thing.
Yeah, and, and I'll tell you, it's hard to work any harder, so you gotta work smarter. And I just think that if you use your software the way that it was delivered to you, you know, that, you know, I think that there was some setup issues, you know, at first, a kind of flawed, skewed information, you know, as it's presented, and then some work needs to be done to get everything in there. It's gonna say, that is where you'll see your time savings. The work that's going on in the past with kinda the repetition and maintaining these spreadsheets and not using the software to the fullest, that is added labor. Labor, definitely labor-intensive for sure, so. So going back to the question that was asked of me, you know, as far as the audit, does it mention it? No, but the management letter does, and that's why we wanted to make sure, you know, that we had this conversation. I don't know what the conversations in the past were, I'm just here to make sure that the conversations would be had now.
They are.
I think that we had a lot of these conversations that I shared with you, but that management letter gets to the best practices and, and really as us looking outside, but I know that some of these conversations have been had, for sure. I just don't know, and I haven't been pervy, 'cause I would come to a board, I mean, I know Charmin, you know, it was her baby, now it's Karen's, you know, mine, I'm more of her wingman, you know, but, here I am, so.
Do we have questions?
Do we have customer support? You said we have to add a lot of things and use the software to its potential. Do we have, is there customer support for that?
The answer is absolutely yes, and, and Trio's struggling right now.
They're slow.
They are struggling badly.
I'll email them questions, and it takes a long time for them to get back. Actually, I had a budget question from last year using the new system, and I would wait it for a month and a half. Karen helped me fix it, so.
So they're struggling bad, and Trio was a main base company, and now they're a Canadian-based company. And I think that what we're seeing now is the migration to that, and, you know, and how they deliver their service, and I think, and it's not just what Peg just said here, it's a lot of our users that have had some frustrations with their customer support.
So how do we work that? If there's something that, if you don't know what the program offers you.
Yeah, so.
Well, this is, the, the, the problem with Trio is reasonably new. But we have other resources we can pull on, which is, would be the auditors and other, other communities that.
And other communities, but also some training.
And training.
To understand how the programs actually work, I think, will, will help.
And so we do have, there is training?
Yes, there is.
Yeah, we used to actually work with Trio in training, but I, I think that they have had a lot of turnover, too, in their customer support, where, where a lot of the training, you know, a lot of it's done, you know, in, in, in virtual world, you know, now in cyberspace, you know, so, you know, but we've got, we went and hired exclusive people at New Trio that sat in your chair, so whatever we can help with, we're always available to help us.
Okay, that's good.
I have another question on the write-offs. I know they're not material, but from a procedural standpoint, if there are to be write-offs or adjustments that impact various accounts in the financial statements, under whose authority are those made? Are they made under our authority or under the sound manager advice?
I, I would say, if there's any contractual obligations that are written off or EMS, I think that between this board and EMS, I think some of the accounting, you know, issues are sold.
I would feel, right.
Yeah, administration, I think that's an administrative function.
And I would let you know, though.
Yeah, absolutely, and we, and I think that they could generate, just as we've done, generate a piece of paper that says, here's what we are proposing, here's what we did, you know.
Or proposing.
Yeah, so.
At what time, at what point in municipal accounting procedures does something become material?
Usually we like to say, usually it's got some, everything usually has a shelf life of one year, is what we always like to refer to it as.
So it's ten years old.
It's time to, that's something that you want to take a look at. Material's a different word, material is the size of what's become.
That's really what I'm talking about.
Yeah, so, size, so the size, I, what we see for write-offs, you know, EMS I think is gonna be a, a big one, but we've deferred it, so there's no financial impact, it can't be material. But as far as some of these other ones, I just think that they're accounting mistakes, you know, they go back forever that aren't material. I don't think that there's anything material that I've seen. EMS, yes, because of the size of the contractual obligations and the balances of some of these, you know, that are owed, you know, that, that because of, you know, the settlements of the insurance companies or whatever, you're not gonna see that money. So that'll be a big number.
Had we recognized that income from the insurance companies in terms of receiving?
So you have recognized it, we've deferred it because we don't believe you're gonna collect. Yeah, it's a receivable.
All right, so you're classifying it as a bad debt?
We can tell you, no, we're not classifying it as a bad debt, we're class.
When you say deferring it, what do you mean?
Means that we're not gonna recognize it as revenue, we don't want you to think that you've got four hundred more thousand.
You're not recognizing it as revenue, you're charging the books by that amount.
Exactly, so we've deferred it. Exactly, so we've deferred it, you know, until you and EMS can get together, this is, this, we know what the numbers are, you know, it's just a function of looking at them and cleaning...
I think so, so, yeah, yeah.
Welcome to my world.
Won't be hard, EMS, they've got all the information, and like I say, this is an easy thing, as I was telling Richard, just a function of time, time now to do it, and just a function of time to do it, it's an easy thing to do, you've got some hyperconstraints, you know, that you want to talk about, you know, and I'm sure Richard will see that.
Yeah, we're planning on having that at the next select board meeting.
Anything else?
Good job.
Well, I hope this helps, you know, and, and again, I apologize for any delay in the past, you know, for sure, we just wanted to make sure we gave you a lot of attention this year so you can go forward.
We got a lot.
Make big decisions, so.
Too much. No, it was just the right amount, actually.
Yeah, and that's the way it should be.
Thank you so much.
Sure, it was a great pleasure.
It was, Ron, it has, it's been great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'll be back soon.
You better, you better!
Okay. Is town manager, these kinds of goals, I call them priority expectations?
I don't know.
I think there's a point that you made earlier, some of these ought to be formed out.
Right.
I don't think really well, you know, when you said it.
I, I, yeah, I, that's...
I mean, this, yeah. I was trying to think if you had changed it.
No, I just...
Didn't see it?
Gotcha.
And then I said, I thought I was correct.
So, we can go through all 42 of these, I know you've added some at the end there that are important.
Yes.
Really important, not that the others aren't, but they've come up in the last quarter or so, don't they?
Well, I just want to say, here's kind of what I'm... You know, it's great to have this, but then life interferes with it on a day-to-day basis, and I think you've just heard a big portion of the life that's interfered with, so it's great to have all of this, but, you know, things pop up and take the place of this. You know, this doesn't include that, you know, we're working on the budget that, so I just, there are some things here, and I, I asked everybody to go through add or delete, I, I don't know if everybody did that, but, you know, some of this really does come down to, is it really something you, I've got to assign it places. I've got to assign it places, and, and I don't want anybody getting the impression that I'm going to accomplish all of these things, because some...
They don't have your...
Well, they, they don't, but somebody's got to foster it, or else it doesn't go anywhere, and that's, you know, it's, I'm just saying, it's...
A lot of these, you're already addressing.
A lot of them I am, but, you know, like, I know that we're going to take the boat rides off.
Yeah, we've already done that.
Oktoberfest is a committee now.
That's right.
But we've got to have some, I, I just want to make sure that you have these and where you think they should be prioritized. I mean, it is, we've been here almost three hours, I don't know if you want to defer it to the next meeting, think about it again.
What's your, what's your, what are your thoughts?
It's fine, I mean, I don't think it's just top priority, but, I mean...
No, it really comes into play when we're doing an evaluation, more than in any other time.
I'm just saying, if we move it to the next agenda, I'm fine with it, but if you guys really could look at it and figure out what you think should stay on and what should come off, and where you think the priorities should fall, that would be really helpful.
I just made comments when I went through it.
Right, but if everybody could do that, that would be great.
I mean, a lot of this stuff is in the process, so, I mean...
It is, just a lot of balls in the air, I'm going to tell you that right now, there's a lot of balls in the air. But I'd like to spend time on our next, I think it's our next item, the warrants and the tax-acquired property list.
Which we didn't get that, did we?
What?
The tax-acquired property list.
You should have.
Looks like this.
Oh.
Oh, did you put one out?
Yes. You went out with your agenda.
Yeah, I thought it was part of the budget, that's why I didn't...
I got this, and...
It should be...
You can have mine.
Should have got it.
I didn't get a packet.
Nobody did.
No, didn't get a packet.
Check my mailbox, yeah.
Nobody did. It was all online.
There were two.
My email's not working, so.
I, I was, should have been in your packet that was emailed to you.
And then when I go online...
No, look at what I emailed you.
I got an agenda and the...
Well, okay.
Online.
Not online, either email?
No, there's no, there's no documents, there's no documents on the website, that's usually where I go to mine.
So you sent an email, but it had these two things.
That's right.
I, but I thought this was...
This one and this.
I thought this was attached to the back of it, okay, or somewhere in it. So where we're at with this, with the tax-acquired property list, is, this is a list of the properties, we're going to give the homeowners, if you deem fit, one more chance to come and pay before we potentially take it over. Is that something that you would like to do? Because we're at that point where, according to Rose, we would send this last letter saying, here you are, we're ready to take it.
We usually do that on an annual basis, I, I don't know that we exempt anybody from it, if they haven't paid their taxes, they ought to know of it.
It's, it's the last opportunity.
Right, we've done that before.
Yeah.
Give them, this is your last chance at this point.
Right, so you have to sign, you have to make a motion, you have to sign these letters, and then...
Yep.
They get sent out.
Okay.
And then you have to decide after that, how you want to dispose of them. There is just one property on here, 41 Beach Ridge Road, that has significant value that if they don't pay, technically you can sell, so, we just...
Is there, is there a motion somebody would like to make on tax-acquired property?
What are you looking for? What kind of motion are you looking for?
Just to send out the letter and for you to, and authorize you guys to sign it.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
It's an elephant in the parking lot.
It's probably a Arctic cat.
Just a quick, a quick comment on the process we've been using to approve warrants. According to the MMA, we're supposed to be signing off on them before the money is spent, and we're doing it on an exception basis at the moment, which I'm told isn't totally kosher, so, they suggested doing one of two things, they suggested assigning one of us to look at everything that PEG has gotten, PEG and Julie have gotten ready to pay, or to, and maybe we can do this at the next town meeting, craft an ordinance good for a year that authorizes our finance director and town manager to spend budgeted monies.
Why couldn't we do that as the chair with your weekly meetings?
We could, as long as, as long as it met, as long as it met PEG's schedule, and there's no reason we couldn't do that.
And that would, I mean, you're the chair, so, I mean...
Well, and I'm going to have one of you with me at every meeting.
PEG has a question.
Was my understanding that you could make certain exceptions for, like, let's say the motor vehicle check, that they are expecting, the state's expecting a weekly check, the Secretary of State being cut, but you would have to make an ordinance for that and renew that every year to allow that exception? That's, that's the only one I'm, I'm aware of as far as exceptions goes. And then as far as signing off, I think if you, like you just said, one or two of you could sign off at the weekly meetings and still keep the same routine as it is, that you're receiving them in advance, hopefully they're attached to the agendas and then during the meetings you can sign off on them, that sounds pretty simple to me.
I'd, I'd go with that, Bob.
Okay, I think we need a motion that authorizing...
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion, do we know what the motion is?
To authorize the chairperson of the select board and/or whichever select board member is during the weekly meeting in the town office.
To sign off.
To sign off.
On the warrants.
On the warrants.
Are you, administratively, how is this going to work? Is it going to really sort of wrench in the process?
No, I'm programmed to 8:30 Monday morning.
Okay.
They're already in her office, for the most part, anyway.
That's, okay.
Yeah, it's not a big deal for us.
All right, shall we vote? All in favor? Who knows?
I just have one item I have to ask that I remembered when I saw PEG's lovely face. We have negotiations starting tomorrow, and I shouldn't, they had to move it to one, I know you'll be a little late for that then, I know, I think they changed the time on me, because that's when they could get there, but these are the only two days that he has until April that he could meet, so I took the days he could make. It came to my attention today through John Degel that previously, I know you had authorized Abden, myself, and Jan to negotiate, in the past, has there been, have the department heads been actually at the negotiations?
I have no idea, I've never been around.
Sometimes, there have been, there were times.
Oh, the only one that I know of was, was, was John Degel.
Yeah, John.
I think he's the only one.
So do we want to have John Lash and John Degel there? I mean, they're more than willing to come, I just didn't know if, I, I, not having done this before here...
I don't, I don't see why not, I mean, I know they would have the feeling of the employees, and that would help with the negotiation.
So we should then, we just need a motion tonight then to include John and...
John Degel and John Lash.
The both Johns into that, and also, I think what John was hitting at today with PEG was there was one person authorized to negotiate for the town. Personally, I think I could negotiate for the town, but ultimately, because I think what happened the last time was, that's how we got the part-time table, we really need the select board to have the final say, so although we're the negotiating team, it's the select board that votes on the contract.
Yeah, that's how it's been.
And that's, that's...
And I just want to make that very clear, so although we are the negoti, the negotiating team, technically the three of us, and John and John are authorized to be in the room as, and PEG also, I think that, that needs to be clear that there is nothing is approved until the select board votes on it.
Okay, so the motion is that our negotiating team consists of the town manager, Jan Minzy, and Abden Simmons, assisted by Public Works Director and Chief Police and Finance Director, and final decisions come to this board for approval.
So moved.
Yep, yep, that's...
Is there a second? All in favor?
Who are the people that are going to sign off on the warrants?